Ms. Egan.
Here.
Ms. Hazard.
Here.
Ms. Healy.
Here.
Mr. McCosker.
Here.
Ms. Young.
Presente.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Would you please stand for the Color Guard presentation and the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sir, permission to present the colors.
Present the colors.
Thank you, sir. Squad, present.
Arms.
Colors, present.
Arms.
I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Colors, order.
Arms. Squad, order. Arms.
Colors, right face. Forward, march.
Squad, right face. Forward, march.
We'd like to thank the Colonial Forge High School's Army JROTC for presenting the colors for us tonight. The Color Guard cadets are Cadet Casey, Cadet Estrada, Cadet Pincumbre, Cadet Swaye, and Cadet Schwartz. The instructors of this JROTC program are Colonel Mark Strong and Sergeant Major Lee Wartham. Thank you for joining us. Before we have a motion to approve the agenda, I'd like to ask Dr. Kizner to make an announcement of an appointment that the board approved after a special meeting this evening.
Good evening. I'm very excited to announce the new principal for T. Benton Gale Middle School will be Ms. Katie Werner. Ms. Werner, most recently and currently is the Assistant Principal at Mountain View High School and has served as the Assistant Principal at HH Poole Middle School for three years. In addition, she taught high school English in a division for 11 years. She has many accomplishments, but I just want to quickly just mention a few things during the interview process that I was very, very impressed with. She has a remarkably strong instructional understanding of best practices. She recognizes the importance of supporting and growing her staff. She mentioned more than once the importance of equity and access. That's an issue that she wants to focus on. And while she was at Poole Middle School, she took a significant responsibility of overseeing the programs for children with disabilities. So I think we made a remarkable decision. I thank the board for approving it. And I know she's in the room, so if you could stand up and let's all welcome her. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kizner, and congratulations, Ms. Werner. We'll miss you at Mountain View, but they're very fortunate to have you at Gale. That brings us to the approval of the agenda. Do I motion to approve the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda with one amendment to move information item number 1107 down to discuss the school board member code of conduct to action.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second the amendment, but I would also, if Ms. Young is okay with it, I would like to delete the exhibit in 1107 that comes from Stafford Growing Pains blog. And this is not just, I've spent much of my career instructing students on how to decide whether or not something is a credible source. And I have no way of knowing if a personal blog, which undergoes no peer or editorial review, is accurate and unbiased. And so the blog posting was not produced by school staff, and therefore I would request that it be deleted.
I'm okay with that.
And if I could also ask that we, Agenda Item 10.04 regarding the elementary school capacity be moved to 10.02 so that we do the methodology before we were to examine the CIP large projects or the CIP improvement. It seems that we should be approving methodology before we approve the follow-on projects.
Okay, is that acceptable?
It's acceptable to me, thank you.
Dr. Chase?
Yes.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve the agenda as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Madam Clark, would you poll the board, please?
Dr. Chase?
Aye.
Ms. Decatur?
No.
Ms. Egan?
No.
Ms. Hazard?
Aye.
Ms. Healy?
Yes.
Mr. McCosker?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Madam Chair, the motion passes.
All right. That brings us to awards and recognitions. We'd like to recognize Ms. Cherie Johnson, Director of Strategic Communication and Community Engagement, for presentation of awards.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, and Dr. Kizner. I am here this evening to thank the community partners that teamed up with the Office of Strategic Communication and Community Engagement to help the Collect for Kids Back to School Supply Drive to be a huge success. Community Engagement Manager Ms. Cheriece Taylor led the event, which took place on August 29th at the Courthouse Community Center. Approximately 65 volunteers packed over 600 backpacks with school supplies to ensure that all Stafford County Public School students have the materials they need to succeed. ABC 7 News reporter Kid O'Shea was there all morning long with live coverage, and for the first time in several years, SCPS took the lead in this community engagement effort. However, collaboration with all stakeholders is key. We couldn't do it without our community partners. The Collect for Kids School Supply Drive is a true community event that involves many organizations who are represented here today and many others who could not attend. Thank you Superintendent Dr. Scott Kizner, School Board Member Ms. Pamela Young, and Associate Superintendent Ms. Pamela Cale for attending this event, even though it was very early in the morning. We would also like to thank our SCPS staff, including the school counselors and teachers, who stuffed the backpacks and assisted with the coordination to make this event a success. Thank you to Stafford County Government Parks and Recreation for providing the location for the event. And we would also like to say a huge thank you to the communication team and Mr. Larry Fox for helping us move all of those supplies to the community center. We really appreciate it. At this time, I would like to recognize our community partners. Representatives, please come forward when your business or organization is called. Audience, please hold your applause until the end. I'd like to start with Right to the Root, Sweet Frog, Vanquisher the Podcast, Give Back Team, Realtors of Caldwell Banker Elite, Caldwell Banker Elite Brokerage, University of Mary Washington, Costco Wholesale, Lidos, Central Rappahannock Regional Library, Cutting Up Barber Shop LLC, Mount Arid Church, Jeff Rouse Swim and Sports Center, Moms Club of Stafford, Crazy for Gaming Video Game Theater, The Rotary Club of Stafford, Michael C. Smith State Farm Insurance, Rappahannock Area YMCA, North Stafford Rotary Club, RPI Group Incorporated, Apple Federal Credit Union, Orange Theory Fitness, Stafford County Parks Recreation and Community Facilities, the Sports Division. And last but not least, Mr. Eli Haney, a student organizer. This was the first year we had a student organize a supply drive and participate. Again, thank you for your support, and we look forward to many more partnerships in the future. Thank you. Now we'll take a picture. Would any of you like to come down? Dr. Kizner, any of you like to come down for a picture?
Oh, I'm never shy for pictures.
You can photobomb them, Ms. Young.
Well, since I was there, why not?
I did. Let's see if it's there. How are you? I've seen you, it's so long. I'm gone before you get there. Oops. Thank you.
Thank you all so much. Thank you again.
Thank you. We got golf on Wednesday. You could show up on Wednesday. Yeah, we do.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, and thank you for all of your and your staff's work in coordinating that. That has a huge impact on our schools and our students. That brings us to special presentations, and this is an annual presentation we have. And this year it's for the 2018 Band Together to Fight Hunger. So Mrs. Bingham and Mrs. Bellino, you want to come down with your crew?
Good evening, Chairwoman Healy. Good evening, Vice Chair McCosker.
Good evening, Dr. Kizner and members of our board. On behalf of our five band parents associations, I am so excited to get to introduce to you our 2018 drum majors who are going to be leading this year's Band Together to Fight Hunger. To my right and your left, we're going to start from Brookpoint High School, Ms. Lauren Black. Representing Colonial Forge, we have Cole Ramus and Caroline Pearson. From Mountain View High School, we have Ms. Lisa Hurd again. From North Stafford High School, we have Ms. Erica Johnson. And from over on my left, representing Stafford High School, Ms. Lauren Sarette, a former student. And our only returning drum major this year, Ms. Michelle Sully. And these young ladies and gentlemen have a very exciting message for you in our community.
We are here tonight to cordially invite each of you to join us Monday evening, November 5th, 7:00 PM at Mountain View High School for our 8th Annual Band Together to Fight Hunger. If it should rain, this event will be held Monday, November 12th. Gates open at 5:30 PM, so you have plenty of time to drop off your donations and enjoy dinner while you wait for the performances to begin at 7:00 PM. We hope you all are planning to come and join us, too.
Band Together to Fight Hunger is an exciting showcase of our own talented musicians from all of our high schools. This is the only time during the year where in less than two hours, you can have the opportunity to hear and see all five of our high school marching bands in concert. It is also night when we have a chance to get back to the community.
Non-perishable canned food donations and monetary donations are greatly appreciated. Last year, with the support of our business partners and attendees, we were able to provide over 30,000 meals back to our surrounding community. This year, our goal is to provide 35,000 meals to the citizens in our area.
Did you know that Virginia only has seven food banks in the entire state? Our Fredericksburg Regional Food Bank serves Caroline, Fredericksburg, King George, Spotsylvania, Stafford, and Locust Grove. They are able to reach and support 57 school age program partners. It's incredible that we are able to touch the lives of so many adults and children in all of these surrounding counties by giving back for just one night.
Additionally, by partnering with the Fredericksburg Regional Food Bank, we're able to reach 66 different food pantries, 23 Fresh Connection agencies, 16 USDA pantries, 13 mobile pantries, and 47 Food for Life Commodities Supplemental Food Program sites, and 27 volunteers. Our food bank is the storehouse for food and other products collected. From there, donations are distributed to our local food pantries and are given directly to the people in our surrounding communities. We are counting on you to join us on November 5th with your non-perishable food donation. Your donation goes to the Fredericksburg Regional Food Bank, who in turn supports our 13 Stafford food pantries, three mobile food pantries, and 12 school age program partners.
After our on-field presentation to the Fredericksburg Regional Food Bank, attendees will be treated to the grand finale when all our bands will band together to fight hunger. Over 400-plus high school band students will be playing on the field together, and it's pretty amazing. It's also one of the highlights of the year.
Please don't forget to bring your non-perishable food donation for the Fredericksburg Regional Food Bank, too. Thank you for your time this evening and your continued commitment to our band programs. We look forward to seeing you on Monday, November 5th at 7:00 PM at Mountain View High School.
Detail, present. Arms. Detail, order. Arms.
Dr. Kizner didn't have this where he came before. This is what he came to Stafford for, just so you know.
Oh, my gosh, where do you go?
I got it in my calendar.
If anyone in this room or watching has not been to this event, I strongly urge you to go. The young lady said it was pretty amazing. It is absolutely amazing. It is an incredible display from our schools. There is no competition here. Everybody is playing together, and they're working for a great cause, and it is an incredible event. So encourage everyone to come and hope that they exceed their goal of 35,000 meals. All right, that brings us to citizen comments. The first item on the agenda is the public hearing on the school board's fiscal year 2020 budget priorities. Individuals wishing to comment on the school board's FY '20 budget priorities may do so at this time. Speakers shall identify themselves by name, address, and organizational affiliation if the spokesperson represents an organization. Speakers shall also announce the purpose topic of their comments. Three minutes shall be allotted to speakers. The chairman reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comment received at any particular meeting to a predetermined maximum number of minutes with the approval of the board. Citizen comment which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm shall be ruled out of order by the chairman. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against division employees or division programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedures outlined in Stafford County Public School Policy 1113 Public Complaints. There are two people who signed up for the public hearing on the fiscal year 2020 budget priorities. I'm going to call their names. If there's anyone else who wishes to address this topic, you'll be able to come forth after the first two people. The first person is Christian Peabody, and the second is Alan Watkins.
Hi, Dwayne. Hi, Jamie.
Are they still here?
Oh, well, we're here.
Good.
All right, Dwayne, here.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
I'm here. Sorry, it takes me a second to get off mute.
Gotcha. All right. My name is Christian Peabody. I'm the president of the Stafford Education Association and the music teacher at Falmouth Elementary. To the members of the board and superintendent and the educators in Stafford County Public Schools, as we begin discussions about the upcoming Stafford County Public School budget and funding priorities, the SEA wishes to take this time to announce its year-long compensation and recommendation plan, which is a 5% across-the-board increase for every county employee. The last four years simply have not worked, and Stafford continues to hemorrhage educators we cannot afford to lose anymore. Their historical narrative has been that things could always be worse, but in one of the richest counties in the Commonwealth in the nation, things should be a lot better. SEA's relentless lobbying efforts last year resulted in increased funding for both the division and the county, specifically in protecting minimal compensation increases. However, that was only a tourniquet, and it won't hold for long with the media market model still in place. The county administrator spoken about its impropriety given our needs, and the overwhelming majority of employees who responded to SEA's compensation model survey have stated unequivocally they no longer want a continuation of the media market scale. It has left a dangerously gangrenous presence on the morale in our division, and a plan to excise it for a better solution needs to be considered immediately. And a 5% across-the-board increase would be that solution. It'd be an equitable infusion needed to shock the system back into life and a prosthetic that leads to division-wide rehabilitation by aggressively and realistically targeting educator retention recruitment through compensation. 5% is the hard, impark-it-cash meantime contingency. It's the meantime contingency while your educators negotiate increasing workloads due to recruitment and retention issues. It's the meantime contingency while your educators deliver quality instruction while continuing with growing class sizes, increasingly disturbing student behaviors, and awaiting desperately needed school construction, which have virtually no timely or significant alleviation in sight. It's the meantime contingency while your educators continue to reach through the students who fight against them every day but who years down return saying things like, "If only you had been my parent at that time." "Thank you for holding me beyond what I almost believed in myself." "I almost committed suicide, but your class was the only thing I had to hold on to." Or "Because of you, I decided to become an educator." It's also the meantime contingency while your educators are now required to prepare themselves daily to mitigate an active shooter scenario at any given moment and with their lives in necessary. Their pay is simply not commensurate. With the potential burden and sacrifice they are asked to make, and because of that alone, they and their families are owed the financial security equal to their burden for delivering that level of selfless service, especially if they may die while doing it. One year's radical and proactive shift in compensation alone would beget a potential for even further proactive and progressive considerations that could be made in order to halt the continued bleeding of staff and align Stafford County Public Schools with tangible actions that make it begin to stand out once again as one of the most desirable divisions in the Commonwealth and not the nation. My compensation task force chair will be speaking to you next. We've provided you a copy of what we will be sending out and working with you hopefully, as has Ms. Ford. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Peabody. Alan Watkins?
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Kizner, and all others present. I'm Alan Watkins, an acquired resident, a Stafford teacher, and a member of the SEA. As I have in the past, I'd like to once again speak regarding the need to properly and effectively compensate Stafford County school employees. It's heartwarming to hear that board members, that they consider compensation being one of the highest priorities as the budget planning process takes place. The refrain of recruit and retain has been heralded for many years. Yet, a nationwide teacher shortage grows. Average teacher pay in our state continues to fall well below the nation's average. And Stafford County constantly lags behind many neighboring counties. The number of current teacher positions still not filled this year is terrible. The number of teachers who have left this county is likewise terrible. Every one of us knows of an excellent teacher who is now teaching somewhere else. The reasons are obvious. Starting salary here in Stafford now stands at $44,075, the highest that it has ever been. That's a good thing. However, if I were to ask you, what year of experience a Stafford teacher finally achieves the milestone of earning $50,000, what year would that be? In Prince William, to the north, that would be in year number four. In Alexandria, it's in year two. In Fairfax, the starting pay for a first-year teacher is $50,000. In Loudon, first-year teachers make even more than that. Even in Albemarle, a teacher can reach $50,000 in their seventh year. But here in Stafford, a teacher does not make 50K until their 16th year. But the real embarrassing, hurtful part of that, way back in 2007, 2008, 11 years ago, a teacher made over $50,000 at step number 14, a two-years-shooter time span that exists here today. Those are only a few of the disheartening statistics when exploring our compensation model. For example, in Prince William, for the first four years, each yearly step increase is 1.7% higher than the previous year. For the next nine years, each teacher's pay increases 3.3%. And from that point on, up to the top level of their 29th steps, each teacher receives an additional 3.2% yearly. If Prince William's percentage of increase was applied to our starting salary here in Stafford, a Stafford teacher would make over $101,000 in their 29th year. They now make just over $70,000, over $30,000 less than in Prince William. That's hurtful, and it's motivationally damaging. A new compensation model must be created, hoping to, on a year-to-year basis, to provide a 2.5% cost of living will not cut it. Even a planned 5% raise for several years will not ultimately cut it. As I said before, the 38-year experience level was the worst thing we've ever accepted. With full VLS retirement enabled after 30 years, having a scale that extends beyond that puts the top of the scale beyond the reach of most teachers. That should never be, and it should never have been done. Hopefully, it was not the intent to always leave we horses reaching out for the carrot that we can never obtain. Only by working with the Board of Ed, the Board of Supervisors, other elected officials, and the SEA can Stafford hope to recruit and retain teachers and other employees. I and the other SEA members are more than willing to assist in creating a new compensation model, a new plan to truly recruit and retain the best and the brightest. We are reaching out to you. Please reach back. Thank you for your time.
Is there any? Is there anyone else who would like to address the board on the fiscal year 2020 budget priorities? We have a sign-in sheet, Mr. Radoski, after you finish speaking.
Paul Radoski, 8 Pickin' Lane in the cherry-mandared Rock Hill District. Two of them are missing, huh? That gives me an idea. I think your stipend is $12,000 a year, so I propose in the 2020 budget, if we had five school board members, that'd be $24,000 a year. You know, as a kid growing up, when you were a school board member, even the superintendent, you did it for public service. You can do it for stipend. Just an observation, I only heard a little bit of the last speaker's speech, but one of the words that caught my eye was carrots. And I love the English language. We're not talking about those beautiful things on your rings. You know, we're talking about those nice orange carrots. And having been retired military, one of the things the military does is they keep on putting out carrots because you're young and dumb, and you keep reaching for them. And you think, oh, man, maybe I might make sergeant major, or maybe I might make chief master sergeant, or maybe I might just be a commission officer and become major disaster for general nuisance. It's just amazing how things parallel between the military and civilian life. In the military, we do a lot of things about teaching. And we're teaching the next generation to fill the seats, and that's why we all want them to get PhDs. You know, public high school diplomas. We're not in the parochial school business. We're in public. We're not in the homeschooling or private school. We're not in the homeschooling or private schools. Or even the privileged. You know, that's a PhD too, a privileged high school diploma. That's what John F. Kennedy Jr. got, just so you know, trying to be fair. Now, as you know, you change the school year, so you need to change the assets that you're going to need because it's going to be hot and sweaty in August. Because I stay in air conditioning. You know, when I was working, I always took my birthday off. My birthday was August 16th, just so you know. Elvis died in 1977 when I was 25. And I called my mom and I told her, "Mom, I'm all shook up because I'm a Beatles fan."
Mr. Waldowski, could you please sign in? Yes. All right. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board on the fiscal year 2020 budget priorities? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing on the budget priorities and come back to the citizen comment period of our meeting. I'm going to have to read this little blurb again because Mr. Magosker isn't here to read it for me. It may sound repetitive because it's the same as we read before. But individuals wishing to comment at this time may do so by responding to the general invitation by the chairman. Speakers shall identify themselves by name, address, and organizational affiliation if the spokesperson represents an organization. Speakers shall also announce the purpose, topic of their comments. Three minutes shall be allotted to speakers. The chairman reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comment received at any particular meeting to a predetermined maximum number of minutes with the approval of the board. Citizen comment which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm shall be ruled out of order by the chairman. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, citizens, individuals desiring to register complaints against division employees or division programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedures outlined in Stafford County Public School Policy 1113 Public Complaints. We have five people who've signed up. I'm going to call those names first. And after these five speak, we can have anyone else who would like to address the board. The first speaker is Michelle Goshorn, and the second is Nicole Nance.
Hi, my name is Michelle Goshorn. I live at 20 Fletcher Drive in the Falmouth District. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight. I feel like I've been up here a lot lately. But there is a habit in Stafford County, especially within political circles, of acting shocked when your actions result in certain consequences. So I'm here to make sure that you understand what changing the capacity number says to all of us. I've spoken to you about capacity many times. I mean, a lot. And I know that everyone wants to be clear with me that you're not changing the methodology. Okay, I'll give you that. You're using the same Excel workbook that you were using before. Okay. What you're changing are the numbers to determine the capacity. And let me be clear, I don't think that aligning the capacity numbers to the staffing numbers is a bad idea. I actually think that's a really good idea. I don't think a lot of us knew that there were staffing numbers and that there were other numbers. So I support aligning those too. I just think you should have lowered the staffing numbers to meet, to the capacity numbers, not the other way around. Staffing numbers are driven by funding that has to be balanced on other budgetary constraints. So aligning program capacity to a bare-bones funded budget creates staffing levels, just gave the Board of Supervisors another victory at the cost of class size, and doesn't allow for any future planning. So I want to be crystal clear about what you're saying. If you vote yes to this, you don't get to say that you are for smaller class size. You just don't, plain and simple. You are saying to that parent who calls to complain at the beginning of the year, "I support having 26 kids in your first-grade classroom." An average, mind you. An average, not a cap, not a limit. It's the average in that classroom. You are saying to that teacher, "I support having 27 fourth graders in your classroom." Have you seen what 27, or 28, or 29 kids look like in a classroom? Because I have. I worked at Falmouth when, in fourth grade year, we had 26, 27 in those classes. It was not pretty. Do you know what it does to a PE? Because they'll have 50, or 55, or 60 in that gym. What it does to the music room and to the library. In some of these schools you have now, you're reading specialists in the library, and now you're going to have groups of 27, 28. I mean, there just is not room. I worked at Falmouth when the fourth grade was at 27, 28 per class. My middle son was in that grade level. It wasn't a good environment for our students. It wasn't a successful year for him. It did not set our teachers up for success. I know the studies say different things about class sizes, but the SEA just did a survey of the elementary teachers about class sizes and shared the results with you. I haven't seen the results, so I really don't like to speak on them, but I'm going to take a wild guess that the survey didn't say they wanted larger class size. I mean, I'm just guessing, but I think I probably am right. Parents don't want larger class sizes. Students don't want larger class sizes. Paras, specialists, and admin don't want larger class sizes. No one but the Board of Supervisors wants larger class sizes. But if you vote yes tonight, so do you. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicole Nance?
Good evening. I'm Nicole Nance. I did not plan on speaking. My son came here to do the ROTC color guard piece, so I'm very unprepared. However, I live in the Hartford District. I have four teenagers who attend Colonial Forge High School. I live in Colonial Forge subdivision. And we have a hill that is maintained by Stafford schools that is never maintained. Our subdivision maintains part of it, but then most of that hill is overgrown. Also, that is the way that our kids go to school up that hill, and there is no safe way for them to go to school. There is construction, of course, going on on Courthouse Road, and all those teenagers walk up that hill. I had two kids this year who were on crutches who had to walk up that hill because there was no sidewalk, and there's no sidewalk up that hill, and there's no sidewalk around. So I'm asking the board to do something because we have a whole neighborhood of kids who walk up Woodcutters and Cutstone Road to go up into Colonial Forge. And no reasonable teenager, once they finish that construction, is going to come out of their house and walk all the way around down Courthouse Road just to go to the high school. So that has been a concern for us. We bring it up in our HOA meetings. I'm just a private citizen. However, I am a concerned parent for the kids in my neighborhood and my own four children who attend Colonial Forge.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Melissa Larson, and after Ms. Larson is Thomas, and I'm not sure if this is Jones. Signed up, the voting district is Stafford. Oh, Jones. Okay, thank you, Mr. Jones. The speaker after Ms. Larson will be then Christian Kane.
Hi, my name is Melissa Larson, and I'm from the Falmouth District. I haven't been up here in a while, but I thought I should really come tonight and speak. I don't understand why some members of the school board are suggesting that Ms. Healy is somewhat not fit to preside over the upcoming redistrict of elementary schools. I have known Ms. Healy for many years. She has always put the needs of the children first. Like when the new Stafford High School was being built, adding and deleting classes were going on. The automobile class in particular was going to be deleted. When my own previous school board member would not help, I went to Ms. Healy, and she stepped up to the plate. She listened and asked important questions about this automobile class. I told her, since she wasn't really my representative, "Could she just give me some advice on how to go forward to keeping this class?" She just smiled and looked at me and said. She represented the entire county, not just her constituents. That impressed me. She was ready to listen and think of the students that were taking this automobile class and the ones that wanted to take this class. The school board did vote, and the auto class is still at Stafford High School today. Ms. Healy has been through the redistrict process before and has a lot of experience that we should be taking advantage of, not suppressing it. Like my mother always used to tell me, "People in glass houses should not throw stones." Thank you so much.
Hello. I first want to apologize for my voice. It is that first month of school, and the kids bring home germs. My name is Kristen Canoe, and I live at 7 Crimson Way in the Falmouth District. It's strange to identify myself by my district since I live in England Run, which means my neighborhood consists of Falmouth, Hartwood, Rocky Run, Ferry Farm, and Margaret Brenn. So I say I'm part of the Falmouth District basically because the children on my street or in my section of the neighborhood go to Falmouth. I want to make a few comments on the elementary school redistricting, but first I want to make it very clear that I'm speaking out of what is best for our county and not what is best for me personally. Because to be honest, if I was only thinking about my family, I wouldn't be standing here. My daughter goes to Falmouth, which I believe is the cream of the crop schools. From the administration to the office staff teaches, paras, specialists, custodians, every bit of that school. And truly, it's actually my fear that with the redistricting, my street or section or whatever you want to look at when you look at that map of England Run is going to be knocked out of the Falmouth District. But here I am advocating for what is best for the county and not just what is best for me. When the redistricting of Falmouth Elementary took place back in, I want to say it was 2017, for the 2017-18 school year, there were three board members, Scott Hirons, Jamie Decatur, and Chris Connolly, who visited and walked through the halls of Falmouth to see the design of the school building in order to make the best possible decision for the kids, the teachers, administration, transportation, everybody that was going to be involved with that redistricting. And although the visits were not done while school was in session, which would have been optimal, I do believe it gave them a little further insight as to what Falmouth could and could not handle. That being said, in the best interest of all that is involved in the current elementary redistricting, I am challenging each of you to visit every elementary school, walk those halls while the school is in session before making any recommendations. Furthermore, the importance of looking at the operational capacity versus the design capacity must be taken into serious consideration. However, that doesn't mean that I suggest increasing the classroom size in order to fit more students into that capacity. I personally know of no research that indicates that having a larger classroom size regarding students increases academic success or decreases behavioral issues. I urge you to do what is best for the community and not just what is best for you personally. I want to end on this. Just don't take the absence of parents at these meetings as an assumption that they don't care. I'm sure that there are some who blindly distrust. But there's also some whose parents are deployed. They're serving our country, and so the other parent has to stay home, or the single parent, or the parent that has a chronic illness. And so they are exhausted at the end of the day, and I'm just speaking from personal experience with that one. So don't look at their absence as apathy. Thank you very much. Again, I apologize.
Thank you. All right. No one else has signed up to speak. Is there, oh, anyone else who wishes to address the board? And anyone who addresses the board from this point, if you could please sign in with your name and address. People, the reason we have these sign-ins, the people who signed in in advance already have that information for the record. Oh, you have to sign in again, Mr. Waldowski, after you speak. This is a separate opportunity.
Really? You have rules?
Surprise.
I'm retired. I don't follow rules. Paul Waldowski, 8 Picket Lane, federal holiday today, National Voters Registration Day. Every day is a federal holiday for me. You know, last time I was here, many people didn't know. I had this on my desk, July 26th, the new superintendent was coming. And then I must have did foreshadowing because two days after September 11th, September 13th, you're going to visit all the schools. And we even have a couple people here who got FaceTime, we call that in the military, went to see the general officer. Who knows, they might become major disaster, your exec officer. Ah, insanity, doing the same thing and expecting a different result. That's what you're doing in redistricting. You don't know nothing about it. You don't have a master's degree in operations research. You don't know about the variance. You don't know how to use the census aspect. And just because one person says that you have one type of data doesn't mean anything. Average means mediocre. That's what we do in mathematics. Average is mediocre. Just simply amazing what we're doing. As you know, I am the chairman of the 2030 Cicadas. Unfortunately, some of my students were wiped out off Shelton Shop Road on the new subdivision called Shelton Woods. I'll have to send you a picture. It's pretty interesting what's going on. As you all know, I am running for public office. My bumper sticker says Waldowski 2019, just to annoy you. Ha ha, I'm not running. Just to make you all, because I was going to make Stafford great again. That was the whole idea, because there'd be no fake news that way. Golly. Now, I'm going to address Falmouth once and for all, so you all know about it. Okay, we're in a Commonwealth. I'm tired of going to Route 1, coming from Mountain View, and I get to see Falmouth on the sign and Stafford. Why does Falmouth have it? Where's the sign for the Garrisonville District? The Rock Hill District? The Aquila District? I just want fairness. Lady justice has a blind fool. She doesn't wear a pirate's patch on the right eye to favor Falmouth. It also says Stafford is to the right. Just an observation. Now, I've told the Board of Supervisors, especially the chairman from Falmouth, the town of Falmouth, 1726, I'm more than happy to make that a town during the redistricting process. She can run for mayor. You can get a school board member. If you look at the schools by district, you have seven schools there. Man, we have seven days in a week. God's on your side.
Thank you. Mr. Waldowski, would you consider signing in, Mr. Waldowski? Please?
Mayor Chase.
Although we know it's 8 Picket Lane, but for the record.
That's a hard act to follow, my goodness.
In the Rock Hill District.
Jerry Mandar Rock Hill District.
Yes. Thank you. All right.
Again, it's a hard act to follow. I'm Dana Brown. I live at 41 St. Williams Way, and I'm here to speak about item 1107. But I think before you all start speaking tonight, you might want to just remind yourselves what the definition of slander and libel are, and note the distinction between the two. Slander means to make false and damaging statements about someone that damages their reputation. And libel means a published false statement that is damaging to a person's reputation or a written defamation. Means one's verbal and one's written. There seems to be some very personal ill will on behalf of some of you toward Ms. Healy. It's so personal that it's reminiscent of the movie Mean Girls. Please try and be professional, or at least do your best to pretend. My mother must have been friends with Ms. Larson's because she taught me the same thing when I was little. People who live in glass houses shouldn't throw stones, and to do unto others and treat them like you'd like to be treated. If you guys really want to foster good relations with the Board of Supervisors, first of all, don't act like you're entitled to all the money. When they give you money for teacher raises, make sure they get it. Get rid of stuff you don't need and quit spending money on it. Make better spending decisions with the money they give you, and don't storm out of meetings like you're having a tantrum. If you do some of that, I bet you things are going to get a lot better. I live and vote in the Rock Hill District, and we've been very lucky to have a real attorney on the board. It's come in very handy on numerous occasions during these meetings. And I'd also like to remind everybody how our system of government works. We, the people, get to elect our own representatives. That means Rock Hill voters pick their own representative to speak for them. And as evidenced by repeated overwhelming ... And as evidenced by repeated overwhelming election results in the 66th percentile and 63, Rock Hill seems to like the job Ms. Healy is doing representing all of Stafford's students. Some of you seem to have a very personal axe to grind with Ms. Healy, and I hope this is not your way of trying to subvert the will of the majority voters in the Rock Hill District and not allow Ms. Healy to speak for us. If you want to talk about the school board code of conduct, you should be concerned over the appearance of unprofessional social media posting. We have a student code of conduct regarding cyberbullying and I know our teachers and principals work hard trying to keep our kids' social media etiquette like think before you post. I think some of you could benefit from that advice and need a code of conduct of your own. Some of the things you post are very unprofessional and libelous. It's conduct on becoming a school board member. We need to have a higher standard. It's embarrassing and you're not setting a good example for our students. It's possible that you're not aware how you sound. You know, I'd hate to have to come up here and read your posts aloud, that would be embarrassing for all of us. Please take some time to look at your policy and, and look at that about social media etiquette. Thank you.
Thank you. Did Mr. Waldowski take her pen? Is there anyone else who would like to address the board?
Good evening. Chairwoman Healy and all of those assembled. Mitrius Singleton, Stafford County resident, I'm in the Rock Hill District. Ditto to what this lady just said. Now, I hadn't seen the post that she's referring to, but I've seen posts before and I totally agree with what she just said. So, you all are here representing the school district, you are here representing the children that go to school in this county. I have a niece that goes to school in Rock Hill District, and I would just like to say about Mrs. Healy, I've known her for years. She's always been someone we can depend on. There's a problem, we call, she takes care of it. I've worked with her on the Health Committee for many years as well, and she's taking care of that as well. So I'm here tonight to support her and to say, please, you all represent this county. Again, you represent our youth that attend schools here, so act accordingly. Because they're looking at you, okay? So I know, like she said about a code of conduct, there should be a code of conduct for you all as well. So, appreciate what you all are doing, let's do it in good order, and thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the board?
Good evening. My name is Clark Lemming. Greetings to members of the school board, Mr. Superintendent. I'm the lawyer that's prepared the lawsuits that has somehow crept their way into your agenda and your information package. Apparently, there is the suggestion that because Ms. Healy is a member of the same firm that files these lawsuits, that somehow there is an impropriety created. I'm here to remind you that the school board and the Board of Supervisors are two entirely separate bodies with different areas of responsibilities. The Board of Supervisors does land use, not you guys. Now, there's a list of cases, open cases, floating around in part of your package. Anybody know how many open cases there are against governing bodies in Virginia? Would the number 10,000 surprise you? Anybody bothered to look at the substance of these lawsuits? Does the word "school" appear in any of these lawsuits? No, it doesn't. There are lawsuits about drain fields, five of them, the exact same lawsuit, that have sat there now for over 10 years because the board changed their policies. There are appeals from the BZA about cemeteries, about used car dealers. There's the revocation of a special use permit for a car dealer. There are cases about Stafford's cluster ordinance. Cluster ordinance permits development on smaller lots, the same acreage, the same density, as if you built by right on big lots. None of these cases have anything to do with school policy, with school proffers, with school sites. And if you had bothered to look at them, you would know that, but you didn't. You just listed them. Now, I'm going to add something, something else you may not know. It has been, 1996 was the last time that Stafford County saw a residential rezoning exceeding 200 units. There has been a retirement community, a very big one zone. There's been a mixed-use community, but everything else is infill. Embry Mill goes back to 1992. Westlake is 1989, August is 1992. You don't have new, big new residential zonings in Stafford County. The board doesn't permit it. So it's build-out, is what we're in. Two years ago, the Stafford Board had to drop its cash proffer guidelines because of legislation from the General Assembly. We don't do that anymore. It's on a case-by-case basis. Now, Ms. Brown mentioned to you something about libel and slander. I'm a businessman, and Lemming and Healy is a business. In a court of law, we don't have to prove damages. It's assumed that when you say something about a business in Stafford County, that it is actionable and you're liable. So, get back to your jobs and leave me and my firm and Ms. Healy out of it. Thank you.
Could you sign in, please, Mr. Lemming? Mr. Lemming, could you please sign in? All right, is there anyone else who would like to address the board? Seeing none, we will close the citizen comment portion, come to the board for Student Discipline Committee Report. Do we have any student discipline to report? Yes, if you could, Ms. Hazard?
I mean, I just have it up. On August 23rd, 2018, a committee of the board met to consider one student disciplinary matter. The committee expelled student A and authorized the student to attend the Regional Alternative Education Program.
Thank you, Ms. Hazard. That brings us to school board committee reports. Do we have any committee reports, Ms. Egan?
We unfortunately had to cancel the Governance Committee meeting. We just weren't prepared for it, so it didn't make any sense to actually hold it. But we are going to regroup and we're going to get some of the information from Dr. Kizner.
Thank you. Dr. Chase?
Yes, the CGS Governing Board met last Thursday. This was the first meeting with the new director of CGS, Jennifer Grigsby. Dr. Donna Poland, who oversees Governor's Schools and Gifted Education for the Virginia Department of Education, gave us a presentation on the roles and responsibilities of the Regional Governing Board and fiscal agent. I think we will be reworking some aspects of our bylaws in response to her presentation. In addition, we discussed the way in which the annual culminating research project is graded. Three of the four participating counties give students credit for their research projects. Stafford County is the only one that doesn't. So I will be bringing a proposal to the board at a meeting in our future to discuss this.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. Ms. Young?
No, we didn't have any CT or technology meetings because I think they were canceled because of the weather.
Ms. Hazard?
I'll discuss it when we get to the legislative priority.
Let's go to our telephonic participants, Ms. Decatur.
Take a minute.
Oh, she's got a little leg. I just asked if you have any committee reports for us this evening.
Okay, no ma'am, thank you.
All right. Mr. McOscar, do you have any committee reports?
No, just information that the Joint Working Schools Committee, we also postponed our meeting that was supposed to happen on the 24th of this month and we are going to reschedule for a later date due to lack of agenda items right now.
Thank you, Mr. McOscar. All right, that brings us to board member comments. Ms. Hazard, would you like to start?
First, I would like to just say, I appreciate everybody's indulgence. During the last couple weeks, we've certainly had everything from rain to traffic to anything else you can sort of think of. So, I really want to say a huge shout out to our staff for, I know that that requires additional support with our buses and getting our students home safely. So, to our bus drivers and those who have to stay, truly appreciate what you have to do because I know how much you love our kids and you want them home safely. A constituent has come to me with some information and some desire that we actually will be asking for in a meeting with Dr. Kizner about bus safety, but not in the traditional sense of what we think of bus safety. There are no national standards about buses when you drop off students, of how old they can be left with, who they can be left with. There was really, there's no national even looking into this and I think that's something we want to make sure of, especially in light of days like I would say today. If 95, as many of us know, some parents who normally would be home by potentially a 3:00, 3:30 timeframe, I'm sure missed it by hours today of what are we going to do in those situations? So that's something I think we as a division and maybe even the Commonwealth need to just sort of figure out what we need to do in that sense of what is our standard protocol in that, in that way. I know our current staff want our students safe, but I think that's something we need to think about, especially in our traffic-jammed society of Stafford County. One other thing, or two other things, I have enjoyed working and getting to know Dr. Kizner for us. Also, we've been meeting him, as you have. I have a special now affinity for him, knowing we like the same music and ended up at the same concert but didn't know we were both there. So, we, I won't go into who we like. Van Morrison. But, anyway, so that was actually fun. And then I think one other thing that we as a board last year took care of, our calendar says that there is a student-teacher holiday on Veterans Day. And I think that's something that we as a board believe that that should occur with all employees. And I believe last year, we did look into saying, when we meant all our employees, this is an area that's very military-connected, that we meant all employees. And I'm not sure if that includes our 12-month, I believe, Mr. McOscar, I believe you last year, or two years ago, it was also your custodian and stuff. If we don't have our students and our teachers in the building, I believe that that should also be a holiday for those, so I hope that's something.
I think that's something Dr. Kizner is going to address.
Okay, excellent, then I have jumped down. So, but anyway, just wanted to make sure that I do believe that that is something we as such a military-connected community, many of us have Veterans Day things that we attend or do and I would not want our 12-months employees in the building when we don't have students or our teaching staff. But other than that, press on, everybody, maybe there will be less rain and we won't need to get oars for our school buses.
Thank you. Ms. Decatur?
Hi. So, I wasn't going to have any comments this evening, but I'm concerned about my signal and my battery power on my phone because I've now been on it since five. And so I just want to say a couple things real quick in case I lose you guys when it comes down to our action items this evening. And the first thing I want to say is, Trish, you and I had a great conversation today and, you know.
Jamie, you died.
Guess she doesn't have a.
It's nothing personal and I just want to tell a quick story. As you guys know, my background is in private day schools. I have been accused, and my mother owns these private day schools, which is something that maybe some of you don't know. I have been accused, since I've been on the board, of potentially having a pool in something that my mother has a financial interest in. And so, what I want to explain is that I think we're mistaking, and I'm so glad that you have support there for you tonight, Trish, because like I said, if I was in your position, it hurts my feelings that we're even discussing this. And I certainly would not want to be in your position. But I do want to make sure that we're talking about the same thing because a conflict of interest is very different than an appearance of a conflict of interest. And I just want to say that if I was ever in a position where anyone questioned whether or not there was anything suspicious, any type of anything regarding my mother owning a private day school and any decisions that I have an opportunity to make on the school board, I would gladly pass the gavel, recuse myself, whatever. But the point I want to make is that the seven of us are a team and we're a team who together answer to the residents of Stafford County. And all I want to do is make sure that as a team, we have no appearance of any type of dictatorship at all whatsoever. And no matter what we need to do together, to make our decisions together, to make sure that we are squeaky-clean to our constituents. And I'm not saying that we are not. I'm saying that if anyone ever questions anything. So, I just wanted to make sure that we're all talking about the same thing. It's not that I believe that there is a conflict of interest. It's that if anyone ever brings anything to my attention, I want to make sure that I'm responding to them and that I'm responding appropriately to make sure that there's no question in anybody's mind at any time for any of us. So I wanted to make sure, I'm sorry to take my board member's comments for this topic, but I wanted to make sure in case I lose anybody that it's said and that everyone knows where I stand. But, you know, I just want to make it very clear that we are a team and we have an obligation to the county of Stafford. And I know that we can come up with a reasonable solution to what some may think appears as a problem and what others don't see as a problem at all, to each their own. But let's, as a team, come up with something that will be solution-oriented. And that's all I'm going to say for my member comments.
Thank you, Ms. Decatur. Ms. Egan?
All right, I'm just going to say to Christian Peabody, thank you for your presentation. And you're right, we do need, we do need to move the scale. We've been at the median too long and I think we had that conversation at the, one of our budget discussions, that it's really time. So I'm hoping that the board will get worked together to work on sliding that scale up to the upper quartile. Thanks. To the countywide PTO and PTA leaders that came here last Tuesday, the 18th, for our little annual roundtable, thank you for coming. I hope that we can incorporate any of your budget priorities into what Dr. Chase has prepared. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Egan. Dr. Chase?
I don't have any comments tonight, thank you.
Mr. McOscar, do you have any comments this evening?
No comments.
No comments, all right. Ms. Young?
I'm scared of you all, no comments. I have lots of comments. I'll take my time. I'm glad I don't have that three-minute buzzer over there. So, but I wrote it down so I could remember. I had my one-on-one with Dr. Kizner and I discussed several number of topics that are important to me, transparency and accountability. I asked for a process to audit expenses of each school. After we received Dr. Kizner's report, we can discuss a follow-up action plan. I'm also requesting Dr. Kizner to give the board a status of the concept of using a consultant for the redistricting plan, including the award of the contract. To keep our community involved and engaged, it is critical to me that the community be kept fully apprised in the county-wide elementary redistricting. Looking forward to move forward on the consulting contract on redistricting. I visited HH Pool last week, this is before your rule. And great things is going on at HH Pool. Mr. Bingham, lovely wife, if you're looking at me. I knew Mr. Bingham when my oldest son was in HH Pool and he is aging gracefully, I tell you, he looks good, no offense, Mrs. Bingham. But Mr. Bingham secured a two-year grant and teamed up with Anchor for Life, which is the liaison with Penny Rowley to implement the Anchor for Life Pilots Navy Program. And it's, I think it partnered with Trevor Remain Company, I'm not sure if that's the name of it, but originally it was to meet the initial needs of the military students who change schools regularly as their parents change commands and bases, but will continue to provide ongoing support. The Pride Program at HH Pool is a pilot program that is not limited to only helping military students at this time. Pride, which stands for perseverance, respect, integrity, determination, excellence, and empowerment, and transition to help kids over difficult situations. The program combines training for leadership within the classroom with students selected by their teachers for their communication abilities and demonstrated leadership. The program focuses on character development and anti-bullying. Thank you, Principal Bingham, young as ever, your staff, and your new guidance counselor that you stole from North Stafford High School. Last week, school board member Holly Hazard and I, we attended the Virginia School Board Association Legislative Advocacy Conference in Charlottesville on September 20th, 2018. Met with several delegates, I'm not going to name them, Terry Gilgore was there. Terry Gilgore was there and John Edwards and a few more. We talked about equity in rural schools, we talked about broadband access and learning and school safety. I've stated before about school safety in my previous comments, and I'm stating it again today, that we cannot just stack SROs and SSOs in the schools. Some schools in Virginia are already having teachers pack heavy, you know, like guns in their lunchboxes. I am totally against that because of implicit bias. This issue is already raising eyebrows and Fairfax are northern neighbors, whom is overhauling that school resource officers program because of illicit bias. And relooking at the program that they have implemented because the data is showing that officers was disproportionately disciplining African Americans and Latinos for that reason. We should, before implementing ours, that we especially be careful that we ensure our SROs are trained in sensitivity classes and not biased against certain groups of people. We need to look at our mental state of our students and ensure that the ratio of guidance counselors against students is reasonable. At this time, it is not. We need to increase students' access to mental health professionals should be a top priority. Our division should plan to broaden students' assistance program from substance abuse to mental health. The goal should be to provide more support for social, emotional, and mental health needs improvements to student wellness, attendance, and behavior should be the expected outcomes. I also attended, almost done? Almost, I also attended a program at Bethlehem Primitive Baptist Church, don't dwell on that word primitive. It is a black historic church that had a historic dedication event unveiling roadside markers for the church and a cemetery. I was joined there by Chairwoman, Board of Supervisors, Meg Baumke, and Board Member Tom Cohen. I met Rosie Mae White, whom in nineteen sixty-two became the first African American student to enter Stafford High School. And I just wanted to read a little piece here of my brochure. Rosie Mae White, Bethlehem member, became the first American student to enter the, the high school. Sherman White drove the school bus that carried the junior and senior classes from HH Pool to Stafford High School. Rosie Mae graduated in June nineteen sixty-three. She went to work at Mary Washington and, at Washington Hospital as a nurse and retired forty-seven years later. PTO, PTA meeting last week was great. Individuals brought up issues such as pay for teachers and safety in schools. Thank you for coming. I enjoy meeting all of you. Some of you asked me to come to your meetings, I'm not sure why, probably because I'm a little loud, maybe I'll, you know, just bring about more people, more money. But just call me and send me an invite, as long as I'm open, I'll, I'll be happy to show up. And that's all I have. Wasn't too bad, was it?
No three-minute rule. Thank you, Ms. Young. I'd also like to thank the PTO, PTA, PTSA leadership who came to our meeting last week. It's always a pleasure to hear from them, and we very much appreciate what they do for our schools. They really make a difference for our teachers in the classrooms. There's a lot of time and effort and resources that, that are put into that organization. And a lot of times, it is by a fairly limited, a number of people, and we all know who they are and, and thank them for everything they do. I'd also like to thank those who came to speak this evening on my behalf. And I'd like to recognize my daughter, who has never been to a school board meeting. You've all heard me talk about her. She's here for a few months. She popped in from her job in DC, so she's sitting with her father there. So, thank you. Yes, there, there is a Sarah Lemming, and she's here this evening. Oh, that's right. She's, she's learning to speak Dutch, so Mrs.
Oh, no, not me.
Young can speak to her. Okay, all right, well, enough of that. Well, thank, thank you, thank you for coming. That brings us to the superintendent's comments. Dr. Kizner.
So I just want to let you know I'm still on my listening, learning, and doing tour. I'm not just learning and listening, I'm doing also. So I've, so far I've had opportunity to visit twenty-three schools, the early childhood program and the alternative program, which I'm hoping that will come back to you in a few months with a name, it deserves a name, okay? But I've been remarkable, I was remarkably impressed what I saw there, I just, just to let you know. So I thank you for doing that as a board. Not every community does that. I've also had this opportunity to meet with five school board members, one-on-one as mentioned, and four board of supervisor members. And in the next week or so, we'll complete the three. And then I, I'm also in the process of scheduling with different stakeholders throughout the community. And I'm going to ask you on Friday in my, my letter to you, to each of you, each one of you to maybe, to recommend two other people that you think I should reach out to so I could get a good sense of the pride of Stafford, okay? As already mentioned, I would like the school board, Holly already gave the background, so I don't really get into details, to offer, amend the calendar so all twelve-month employees could be off on Veterans Day. So I don't think it requires an action or just a blessing or.
Does anyone have any objection to that? No? Well, I don't think we, I think Dr. Kizner can do that with our consent.
All right, thank you.
If you determine you needed to bring the action, then we'll just put it on the consent agenda for the next meeting.
In, I like, well, I liked all the comments, but there was one comment about board members visiting all the elementary schools. I think that's a great idea, so I'll throw it out there with some dates and, many dates, and hopefully you'll get a chance to do that. November is also bring your legislators to visit schools. So we will organize that, and again, keep everybody informed, and, and hopefully you'll join us in that.
You're going on a yellow bus?
Well, we're going to do a yellow bus too, I forgot the date, October.
Twenty-seventh.
October twenty?
November.
November, November, wow, November twenty-seventh, but plenty of time to talk about the yellow bus, but we're doing yellow bus also. So as already, there's, you know, I'm learning in Stafford, you think you know how to get to a place, and then you go the next day, the road is closed or there's a tree or water. But, and to avoid ninety-five if you can, so. So we are trying to communicate to parents, we've already started the process. There are several road closures affecting our area, including Parkway Boulevard in Stafford. It's already been closed to Friday. Next week, Pope Poplar Road?
Pope.
Pope Road, and Stafford County will experience several, several closures as well. So we're, we're working with transportation, we're, we're doing robo calls, we're picking out Peachtree. We're trying to communicate to parents as, as much as possible and often as possible, the ways we're rerouting. But as today, you might be aware, you know, there was some accidents on ninety-five. So buses are doing their best job to make sure they get the kids home safe and timely. But unfortunately, circumstances may prevent them to get there as fast as we would like. So, all right, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kizner. Do we have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent.
Second.
We have motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to action items. Ten point oh one, approve the proposed revisions to the school board's finance and budget committee bylaws. Dr. Chase.
I know, I think we've, we've all had an opportunity to look at them, they're, they're fairly minor changes, so.
Do you, do you have a motion for us?
Move that we approve the proposed revisions to the school board's finance and budget committee bylaws.
Second.
Second.
Well, I think Ms. Young was first.
You need to be present.
Second, second, second.
It's that little delay. We'll get, we'll get you when you come back, Mr. McCosker. All right, we have a motion and a second for approval of the proposed revisions to the school board's finance and budget committee bylaws. Is there any discussion? Now, I'd like to thank you, Dr. Chase and your committee for, for your work on this. I think it's, it's, it's important to have updated bylaws and, yes, and you're part of the committee, Ms. Young.
Ms. Decatur.
And Ms. Decatur, thank you as well. All right, so all in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Will you hear Mr. McCosker?
No, that was Decatur.
Okay.
I'm sure he was an aye, he was a second.
Yeah, I'm an aye.
You're an aye, okay. All right, that motion passed unanimously. We have to get used to this little stereo.
Yes.
Phones, with the little lag. It's, it's interesting. By the end of the meeting, we'll probably have it down. All right, that brings us to the revised ten point oh two, approve the annual elementary school program capacity model in support of the FY twenty, FY twenty-nine capital improvement plan and two thousand nineteen student accommodation plan. Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the annual elementary school program capacity model.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Dr. Chase, second by Ms. Young. Is there any discussion?
I give the motion makers the first. Sure. I, I would just like to say that this proposed change actually means that our staffing standards actually match our building usage. And I think that's very important. And I, I do want to say that I, I did hear constituents talking about concerns about class size. It's hard up here to balance, you know, on the one hand, one group wants a five percent raise. On the other hand, people want us to hire, you know, twenty more teachers. Unfortunately, we don't have money for everything, and so we have some hard decisions to make here.
Ms. Young?
I believe that we're doing the best for the students of Stafford County. We, we have a certain amount of money that we need to put across all the things that we, that come before us. Our students are a primary gift and important, so we're just going to make sure that we, we have classes, we have teachers for those classes instead of having more teachers and we don't have students versus having students with no teachers. We, we need to balance that, so I think we're making the right decision here.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Ms. Hazard?
Obviously, everybody's waiting for my comment because I will not be supporting the motion, as I have said. I believe that several years ago, we brought forth a recommendation to reduce class size. We also, at that same time, over those two years, put forth staffing standards that really seemed to align, in my opinion, with, it appeared best practices, or at least that's how it was presented to us at the time. At that time, the staff recommended that kindergarten be at, we, we wanted twenty-two, we wanted it less than, than first grade. One to three would be twenty-four, and fourth and fifth would be twenty-five. Additional teachers were hired to meet these targets, which I think was a good thing at that time. I do find it astonishing that we want to change that because last year, when we looked at our class size model or, or the data that we received, it said that our K to three average was about twenty-two kids and fourth and fifth was twenty-four kids. To me, it seems that this current model is working, and I do not want there to be any perception that we would increase. My, my fear is that this is not best practices. I do have to defer to certainly our instructional staff and our, and our planning staff. But I have to say that what this feels to me tonight is that then we are negating the school board's goals. We are raising the capacity by two students in, well, in kindergarten from what we hoped, up two students, up four students, actually. No, up two students, excuse me. And my fear is that the reason I cannot vote for this, we have decide, we have talked about program capacity and design capacity. The design capacity of our buildings is twenty-four students, K to three, and for fourth and fifth, it's twenty-five. I see no reason why we should go above what design capacity is. Also, our SOQ funding from the state is twenty-four and twenty-five. And our teaching ratios, how the money we receive is a blended model of twenty-four. The twenty-four we are talking about here is, as it says in our staffing standards, an average. That doesn't mean every day that is exactly how many kids are in the classroom. I am not math, most of you know that, but when our average can move up to twenty-six and twenty-seven, to me, that means there can be somebody at twenty-eight and twenty-nine. And that was not, that was something that I felt that the board fought hard to make sure we were moving from. So I will not be supporting the motion for those reasons. I think that we have, the original staffing standards, believe it or not, as originally implied, I know we wanted to go lower, and perhaps we did not, but that the twenty-two, twenty-four, and twenty-five meant, made a lot of sense to me because it also aligned with what the Virginia capacity and funding mechanisms were.
Thank you, Ms. Hazard. Ms. Decatur?
I, I, I really am doing, doing this. I can't see anybody. I'm sorry. Well, I'm also not going to be supporting this. And, and I hate to always be, you know, the, the optimist dreamer, but, you know, when I walk through our schools, we've got signs up that say their dreams could be anything, you know, all of these positive, reach for the stars posters hanging around our school. And that's a conversation we've had about these class size numbers has been a limited, limiting mindset. And I don't understand that coming from our leadership. You know, all I've heard is we can't afford this, we don't have enough classrooms, there's a national teacher shortage. And I just, you know, I, I think, first of all, the board, before I was even on it, started something, and they started something great. They were on to something. When I got on the board, I was all for it, and I continue to support these class size reductions. I've already mentioned, I've got a three-year-old and a four-month-old that are coming to these classes. By approving this, we're, you are raising, you know, the class sizes. And we're not striving to be any better than we are right now. And I, I can't, I can't appreciate that. I can't in, in my right mind say the fact they say, to not strive to be better and in fact to lower our standards. So that's where I stand. I think that it's a very limiting mindset. Last year, I worked my tail off with developing rapport, having amazing communication with board of supervisors. Dr. Venkman called me after the board of supervisors approved their budget, and he said, thank you for all of the work you did. We got a little bit more money than we did the last year. And to me, every year, if we could just do a little bit better and a little bit better, that's good for me. It's harder, yes, but our students are worth it, our teachers are worth it. And I think that to approve this would be a mistake. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Egan.
I'm not going to repeat what I said at the work session, so I'm just going to say ditto to what Jamie and Holly have said. That's it, thanks.
Mr. McCosker?
Yes, thank you. I will be supporting this. You know, there's been a lot of confusion about this issue, and the issue here is capacity for building in the future. We're, we're trying to send a message to the board of supervisors and, and to us, of course, about when do we need new schools? That's what this data drill is about. It is not about class, capacity, it is not about, not capacity, it's not about class size reduction, okay? We keep, we keep using that class size reduction. Class size reduction in the staffing standards is exactly what we did two and a half years ago when we reduced elementary school class sizes, and it costs money, and that's fine. And, you know, I have always been beating the drum on two things. Employee pay, which we did okay with last year, not great, but we did okay with what we had, and class size reduction because those are the two important things to our constituents. But the picture that this heretofore eighteen and nineteen designed chicklet chart painted was that we needed new schools earlier and in, and in places that we may not need new schools. And, you know, if you go back and look at the data, some, some of these schools that were painted in red, you know, were destaffed teachers this year, and they were, they were actually reduced in students. So we didn't need things that we. So we didn't need things that we were beating our drums about saying that we needed. We were wrong. So I'm, I am glad that the staff came back and took a good, hard look at it, and we can, and we're going to take a good, hard look at, at these numbers at our, at our staffing standards every year, I hope, and, and put money against those. But the capacity for where we need new schools, and I'll talk a little bit more about Ferry Farm, oh yeah, I will, you can bet that. But capacity for new schools with, with this metrics and staffing standards is two different things. And, and so, you know, that's my two cents. Bye.
Thank you, Mr. McOsker. I'm going to be supporting this because it aligns the program capacity with the staffing standards that are in place, and that we actually hire teachers for our classrooms at this time. That doesn't mean that this is going to be in place forever. I think Ms. Egan raised a, a good point at the work session. You know, we need to be reviewing those staffing standards, and we will be reviewing those staffing standards, not just the elementary school classroom standards, but all our classroom standards, as well as the support positions such as the diagnosticians and others that we have, as a board said, we want to have as a standard in our school. In a perfect world, we'd have plenty of money and plenty of room, and we could hire, you know, all the teachers that we wanted. But as Dr. Chase pointed out, if there's, you know, teachers not available to teach the students, it's, there's no point to, to talking about smaller class. I didn't mean to paraphrase you, but I, I think it was a good point. We said when we first dealt with program capacity that we would review it annually. I think we need to do that, and I would, you know, ask Dr. Kizner to tell us when would be the best time in the year for this to come back to us. You know, I don't know if it's the beginning of the year, the end of the year, the middle of the year, whatever, but I would ask that you let us know because this is not the last time we will be discussing this. We have to look at it. You know, we're talking about the redistricting. When we have the redistricting, that could change the class size reduction schools. Well, maybe not for next year because they do it two years in a row, but that's all based on certain percentages of, of students at that populations at the schools. So we, we need to look at this every year, but I, I appreciate staff coming forward and, and making a recommendation, and I think this aligns us with our, our staffing standards, which we hire for, and does not give an unreasonable expectation to the community. Now, that doesn't mean we won't have some smaller classes. These are the, these are the, the capacity, which would be the maximum that we would be looking at. We're not suggesting that every class will be filled to the maximum at every time. That's, that's just not mathematically possible, given the fact that we don't pick, you know, when our students come in, or what grade level they're at, or, you know, perhaps even what school they're at. So I, I know there's been a lot of effort put into this. I'm, I'm seeing Matt here. He's been working on this for months, maybe years, and, and will be in the next coming years. Well, Mr. Haran, and, and instruction as well. So thank you for all the work that you've done. I think you've heard from the board, there's still questions. This is something that will, will not be ended after the vote this evening. So if there's no more discussion, we'll call for the question. All in favor of the motion to approve the element, annual elementary school program capacity model as stated in 10.02, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No.
Madam Clerk, would you poll the board, please?
Aye.
Ms. Decatur?
No.
Ms. Egan?
No.
Ms. Hazard?
No.
Ms. Healy?
Yes.
Mr. McOsker?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Brings us to 10.03, approve the FY 20, FY 29 capital improvement plan, large projects and infrastructure priorities. Do we have a motion? Ms. Young?
Motion to approve the proposed revisions to the joint capital improvement program policy?
10.03. Oh, you did, you know what? You need to refresh.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Ms. Hazard rearranged for us. Thank you. Well, it's the annual, no, the FY 20, FY 29 capital improvement plan, large projects and infrastructure priorities. So do we have a motion to approve? No motion? Well, is there a motion to defer this, or just, it's got, it's got to be, it's got to be addressed at some point?
I move that we defer.
Either as it is or with amendments. It doesn't have to be this evening.
I move that we defer.
10.03. All right?
Second.
All right, motion and second to defer this. Do we have a date certain, or do we just want to defer it? Table it.
Ma- Madam Chair, this is Mr. McOsker?
Yes, yes. Yes, sir.
Yes, Madam Chair. No, I, I think what we need to do is, we need to sit back down as a, as a board and just kind of focus on this topic for about 60 minutes. That, that's my suggestion. Don't try to cram it in with five other things. Just, I know we have meetings three times a week, but it's, we just, this is very important, I think, and I just think we need to sit down and kind of focus on this, and that's just my two cents.
All right. Well, we'll, we'll get to that one. Did you have something to say, Ms. Hazard?
My only comment would be, is, as I have stated up here several times, and this bleeds a little bit into the second one, so I'm not trying to merge both, but I think they are connected. It appears that we've been requested to provide these projects in September. Most of us who are part of a school district know that September is spent finding out who arrived this summer and who came and who, and who made it to school. For us to be able, for us to be able to say, these are our needs as of today, I, I think is very difficult because come November, I forget, 15th, 1st, whatever the date is, when we get new enrollment figures, I also, as I have stated, believe that the process, and I'm sorry this is bleeding into the second one, is it doesn't respect, if it's a joint process, it needs to be a joint process, not a joint product. Just, oh, we all agreed on a product. The process has to be joint, and there has to be a respect to the school board and to the school system that we want to give you the, give the best information, not only to the board of supervisors, but to ourselves and to our constituents of who arrived, what changed from last year. Because we voted on the CIP projects, I don't know how many times last year, three times. The last vote was May 23rd. I have no new documented information that changed since May 23rd to today for me to say, wow, let's do this. Let's change these dates. I don't know, and I'm not going to know in the next two weeks either. That, I think that is a flaw in the policy, but I think it has major questions for us because if we send projects over, as Dr. Chase said in the, in the meeting, and if I paraphrase incorrectly, let me know, I'm going to say it this way. It says, send them over, and then when you get, send over your enrollments in November, the technical review committee can overrule you. This is the, this is the board, this is the school board's job, is to figure out what the priorities are based on our best information, not a technical review committee in November, and I will continue to say that that is the wrong way for us to go. So I don't know what date to give you, except we can have the discussion, but it sounds like we have a lot of modeling to do. I don't know.
Ms. Young?
I was just saying, should we then defer both 10.03 and 10.04 and have discussions on both of them?
I think we should discuss 10.04 separately tonight, just to get our concepts together, and then.
Do we, are we ready to discuss that?
Well, let's, let's take care of 10.03, and then we'll move to 10.04, and you can make a motion on that one. How about we do that? Any other discussion on this item?
So the motion to defer.
Yes. Or is that the proper motion? If we want to just put, we want to postpone this?
If it's a proper motion, if, if tables it indefinitely, somebody would have to affirmatively wish.
Yeah, I think that's what we want. Okay, then that's the perfect motion, right? You know, we will, this will come back because it needs to be addressed. But Ms. Egan, did you have anything to say? No. Ms. Decatur? Oh. Mr. Mr. McOsker, are you still with us?
Yeah, of course I am.
We can't get rid of you, can we?
I, the only, the only thing, I just got a headache. Who was talking before you? Was that Daryl Nelson?
Yes, that was our, that was our legal advisor.
Okay, no, I, I've got, you know, let's defer it and, and talk about it when we, we're all on, we're all on point.
Okay, and I, I certainly will support that motion to defer it. I would encourage this board to have this discussion. I, I know our time is limited, and, and I agree with Mr. McOsker, we need to devote an hour to this. We need to, to, to have this discussion and make this decision so that we can send our priorities and our plans to the board of supervisors. If they don't receive it from us, then they will be making, you know, their independent assessment and decisions that we may or may not be in agreement with. So I'd, I'd say if we can ask Ms. Hall to see if, if we can set aside, you know, a time, I don't, you know, these nights are all filling up, or we can, we can say that we'll set it an hour before the next, the next meeting, you know, one or the other. It doesn't have to come back on the agenda for the next meeting, but I would say within the next, within the next month, it would be in the board's best interest to, you know, to come to a, a plan on this and, and make a decision. Ms. Hazard?
And Ms. Healy, there are actually, it appears, two attachments to this that also include the three R projects as well. And I would just like to state in, after our visit with our PTOs, one of the topics that came up regarding infrastructure was playgrounds and the adequacy of those. And I know that they are listed here, but I think we heard from more than one elementary school. I look at Anthony Burns, and it says repair play area, and it's projected in 2029. Well, Anthony Burns opened in 2006, so we're talking 23 years potentially. Now, there may have been upgrades, but I'm just saying, that was something I felt like we heard loud and clear from our, from our PTO presidents, that they are now trying to raise those funds. I would just like to say, could we think about on this three R list, potentially looking at the playground assessments to maybe be either moved up, or at least be able to report back to our PTOs? Here's really where they are, and I know you have Anthony Burns. I would hate to say.
Meanwhile, would we be able to at least make sure that they're safe while we're waiting for the assessment?
Yes, Mr. Haran's office is in charge of that, I believe.
And I'm sure they'll follow, but it just seems like an awful long time for more than 20 years. And I know, Ms. Healy, you have.
Well, you know, playgrounds are close to my heart.
I know, so.
Back when I started on the board, it was about $50,000, and now I found out from the PTOs, it's $100,000. So inflation has hit playgrounds as well as everything else over the years. All right, well, let's, let's try to set up a, you know, an hour minimum, Ms. Hall, and, you know, if we could set a separate night, we could, we could do this, and if we decide to add 10.04 to it, we can. Unfortunately, we didn't have enough time. Is that, is that, are it with the board? If we look for a separate night? The problem is when we, we have these work sessions, and we're very ambitious about setting up the agenda, and we put all these things on, and then we need more time than, you know, than is, is available, and we don't want to cut short the discussions because, you know, they're, they're all important.
Is there going to be food?
Is there going to be food? That depends on what time we start. All right, where's that?
Does everybody have to know?
Someone brought us some candy.
Does everybody have to know what I'm doing here?
It's Halloween is coming. All right, is that, is that agreeable to have Ms. Hall try to find a night? Okay. And you might want to set that for an hour and a half because I have a feeling we're not going to finish in an hour. Um, yes, so now we'll, we'll take the, the motion to defer to date uncertain. All in favor, please say aye.
And the three R projects.
Aye.
Well, we, we have to do for 10.03, and then we'll get to 10, we'll do 10.04 next.
I thought they were attached to three R. Oh, so.
Oh, okay, yes, the whole, the whole agenda item.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear.
10.03. And motion to defer, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All right, motion carries unanimously. All right, 10.04, approve the proposed revisions to the joint capital improvement program policy. Ms. Young, did you have a motion on that?
I was just saying the same thing, that I think we need to defer this also and take some more time unless somebody wants to approve this right now. I just think they go hand in hand, looking at the.
Well, maybe we should talk about it because I have some issues with it. Do you, do, do we have to have a motion to talk about it?
We should have, we should have a motion before we have a discussion.
All right, so motion to approve for discussion purposes.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right.
Thank you.
We have motion second. Ms. Egan?
So the revisions to this, there are a couple of things that kind of jumped out at me. The removal of the capacity prioritization was decided on by three members, and the change was apparently made, and it's put into this. I didn't vote for that. It's not consistent with the county comprehensive plan. It doesn't say that we are, you know, we're going to prioritize projects based on what the county needs, what our standards of, or, or level of services is what the, the county refers to it as. And I just, I, I have an issue with that, and I'm, I don't know if the board of supervisors have adopted this yet, but I find it hard to believe that they would vote on something that goes against the premise of their comp plan. So that was, that was one of the issues. And then there was another issue I had in here that in, somebody made in addition to the appendix that basically established that our high school capacity was going to be set at 2150. I don't remember voting on that for, for our high schools going forward. We talked about having educational standards, kind of like what we did with Moncur to establish, you know, what do we want out of our, out of our buildings? What programs do they have to support, that type of thing? And we haven't had any of those conversations yet, so I'm, I don't know how they came up with the 2150 and added it to this document during a joint committee meeting that hadn't been approved by our full board yet. Do you know what I'm saying? So where did the 2150 come from?
I, I thought that came from the previous joint board, and I may be wrong about that. So it appeared, and I just, I, there had been discussion.
Do we want to talk to, ask Scott, like, the details? Oh, Dr. Kizner, can we pull Scott forward to answer some of these questions? He's right here. Not, not.
What's the question?
Um, we wanted to ask Scott to come forward, and I was asking.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. Yes. Yes, you're correct, Dr. Chase. It was included in last year's documents, and it was a carryover from last year. It was during the discussions we were trying to solidify, and it, it follows staff's recommendation and what we've been practicing, that 2150 is the vision we have for new high schools, the size of the new high schools. And so it was documented in last year's process, and it was a rollover into this year.
Was that done in the technical review committee, or was that done with the three members of the board of supervisors and the three members of the school board?
I think it was done with discussion with the three on three, you know, the three. So the OSC Oversight Committee.
Okay, well, that wasn't part of that. That was, that was the two fabs.
But it follows, it follows suit of what staff has for year, several years now, practiced that, and we've projected that in the student accommodation report, as well as some of our CIP documents, that our high school target is 2150.
Are you all comfortable with that? Or is this something that we need to talk about when we have the conversation about the educational specifications? Because I, I'm not comfortable with it. We, how do we know that our core services are going to support? I just think we have to have a conversation with it before we commit ourselves to a number of students in a high school.
The Foreman?
I have, I have, don't go anywhere if, if I have a question, but.
Sure.
Mr. Haran, who pays for the three R projects?
Currently, the process is that we have not been able to budget significantly for three R projects in the school board's budget. So for the last two to three years, our practice has been that infrastructure requirements are funded with operational savings from that particular fiscal year that we're in. So last year, we were able to fund a large amount of projects with FY18 operational savings. It was also supplemented by FY17 carryforward funds that were, the board requested consideration for some funding of some projects to the Board of Supervisors. So those were the two areas that we funded the majority of our infrastructure projects. We hope to continue to attack it in the budget process. Staff plans to bring forward to the board, I believe, some requirements to slowly increase the amount of dollars that are identified in the budget for infrastructure projects. Does that answer your question, ma'am?
Yes, my, my comment then on that, when I look at this process, is now it appears the TRC can, like on the other thing, override the school board prioritization of the three R projects. And at this point, I'm not sure I'm entirely ready to make that leap. I'm not, it appears we're going to have more discussion. But if you and Dr. Kizner want some of my, where I may have some heartburn, again, it goes to what I keep saying. I feel like this joint process, in every way, shape, and form, erodes the role of the school board.
So, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Okay, so, so I heard what the board member said, and so the original Appendix A, you know, we discussed the 2150, and that was in Oversight Committee. That's correct. Mr. Horens was correct. And we decided what's the, what, you know, we should come up with the right number. And 2150 was what was agreed by our staff and our superintendent at the time. And that, that was the correct. It wasn't 2250, it wasn't 2050, and so that's how that number stayed in there. If we want another look at it, to do some data on that, that's fine. So the original, not, not the three current members, now the three previous members, I think it was Ms. Egan and a few others, put in Appendix A. So, so projects approved in the previous CIP will not be looked at by the Technical Review Committee, but the Oversight Committee, the three board members, okay, can recommend that projects, even when, if the dirt's turning and shovels are already done, that they can be stopped at any time due to the needs of the community, which, which I thought was absolutely ridiculous. Okay, so here we have a process that we all agreed on that was eight pages of metrics from this review committee. And then an appendix to this process says that, hey, listen, I don't care what you guys did. Oh, by the way, we can cancel it anytime. Just, I just need a couple of board members' votes. Well, I think that is totally inappropriate and was wrong. And so we brought it up, the current folks, myself, Ms. Healy, and Dr. Chase brought it up to say, you know, now, however, if there's something, a catastrophe happens, and all seven, all 14 members, Board of Supervisors, uh, seven members and seven members of the school board says, we can't do this project, we have to do another project, and this has to stop. That was the initial suggestion that I gave. But this, 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 you know, I'm, I'm going to stop because the Oversight Committee feels like it. That, that to me didn't make any sense. And that's when Mr. Foley said, well, why do we even have that in there? It's just like extra words that, hey, if, if the Board of Supervisors and the School Board want to stop a project, they'll stop a project. Why do we need to say it? It's almost like, hey, you know, no matter, just, just remember, whatever you do, we, we, three votes, and I'll, we'll stop this, and so that's why it was changed to, to make sense. Out.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McOscar. Well, is there a desire on the board to proceed with a vote on this motion? Or to consider deferring this along with the prior agenda item?
I'd, I'd like to defer it to the same session that we would discuss both of these issues.
Is that, I see Ms. Egan shaking her head.
Second, yeah.
All right, so is that a substitute motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a substitute motion.
All right, so we have a substitute motion to defer this item, seconded by Ms. Young. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to defer this to the same meeting that we have the prior agenda item on? And Ms. Hall, we will schedule that for now a two-hour work session. So we will definitely need something to eat.
Yeah, I was getting ready to say, you better have some food.
That's right, that's right, Tom. The one that gets somewhere on 95. All right, all in favor of the motion to defer this item, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Mr. McOscar, FYI, we were going to have food tonight because we started at five, but there was this horrible backup and accident, something happened on the interstate, and our food never got here.
Ms. Healy, point of privilege, can we have a quick bathroom break? I apologize.
Well, can we just, why don't we just take the next action item, and then, you know, if we want to have a break before information, we can do that. That brings us to 10.05, discuss the school board member code of conduct. Do we have a motion?
Uh, motion to approve.
Do we have a second? And could you explain what we're, your motion to approve is, Ms. Egan?
Uh, well, it's, of course, there's no action on it. It was for information tonight. So it was moved by Ms. Young, which is fine. I don't have a problem with that. So there's no second, but I would like to say a few words, if I might.
Well, do you, can you tell us what your, your motion is to approve?
Well, what I, what I was asking the board to do, since it's on for action, it's an up or down vote. Do we pass the gavel when we talk about things that are related to development? Any proffer discussions, redistricting, capacity could be an issue. I don't know. So I sent out the information, and I thought it was all going to be on, it, what's that portion of the?
Information?
No, the, the place where you have to authenticate to get in, to see the attachments?
Oh, the executive section?
Yeah, well, I thought that's where it was going. So that was an opportunity for you guys to see what it was that I was talking about. So let me be, be very, very clear about something. Ms. Healy, I don't have any ill will towards you whatsoever. This had, this has nothing to do with me liking you. I think you're a fine chairman. I think you're a fine person. I like you. There's nothing, I, there's, you know what happened three years ago. I am acting at the will of my constituents, and I've heard from them loud and clear. So this was nothing personal. As a matter of fact, I even put in the agenda item that you, that you are a good chairman, that you are a good school board member. I, and anybody out there who says that this is personal, and they don't know what's in my heart, so don't listen to anything that they're saying. This, this has nothing to do with any of that. This was me acting at the request of my constituents to change things so that we don't have another lawsuit, so that we don't have any more people getting up here and kind of pointing their finger at you like they did the last time. I, I was, that made me uncomfortable. So I looked at it, and I thought, well, you know what, Duane's a fine vice chairman. Let him take the gavel, and, you know, we can just go on with our business. I didn't know that, I didn't think passing the gavel was a big deal. I thought that's what the vice chair was for. There were times that I sat next to Holly, and I was the vice chair, and she wanted to vote on something or make a motion on something. She would hand me the gavel. So I see, I, I understand where this is going, and I'm sorry if I hurt your feelings or if you thought this was a personal attack. It's not. I like you. I've always liked you.
Thank you.
So, you know, what's the will of the board? We don't, I don't have a second, so it dies.
Well, if we can have a, a second for purposes of discussion, that may be well, then we could take a vote on it.
I'll second for purposes of discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. So now we can have further discussion. Dr. Chase, do you have anything you want to say?
Sure. I guess my concern is that the, the issue was an appearance of impropriety. And I, I guess, you know, in, in reading Ms. Egan's comments, there was something about several comments came across social media. And I don't really use several comments on social media to make my decisions. And I really question whether something that somebody writes in social media should be considered about the appearance. And Ms. Decatur mentioned in her comments earlier that if anybody had a thought that there was an appearance of impropriety, she would recuse herself. Well, we've been elected to represent our constituents, and just because there's an appearance of something, that doesn't mean there's a reality of something. And for me to not represent the people who elected me because somebody made a comment on social media that is not true, I would not be carrying out my responsibilities. And so I, I kind of have a problem with, with our setting the standard there. So that, that's sort of my comment.
Thank you. Ms. Hazard, do you have any comments?
I do. I think this is a tough issue for all of us. I sat during those awful redistricting hearings and heard the hateful things that were said. I sat with you at the Garrisonville one, which to me was the hardest place to ever sit and listen. I think that this issue is one of self-governance within ourselves, of what we expect of ourselves as a board. And maybe that is the issue. To me, the, the motion and how it's on here doesn't really say what I, I think is being asked. It says to discuss the school board member code of conduct. I think we do need to discuss it. I think it is something that we do need to look at. I do, I understand Dr. Chase's comments about that we are elected to represent our district. But there's another part of us also that we are represented as a board of seven people, of how we are viewed as an entire board. And I think that, I, I hope it's never a tension, that's something we have to wrestle with in, in general. And so I think that, I think it's hard for us to make that, but I do believe that there are concerns in general, and it may be broader, you know, than that about things that we do, things that we say, that maybe that is something we have to discuss. But I think we have two, well, more than two roles. But one is our individual representation, and our representation as a board to make sure that we are above reproach. And I think we all strive to do that. That doesn't mean we always meet it. I think we always, I hope, as a board, try to. I think it's been a difficult year for a variety of things. We have a brand-new superintendent. I hope we look at doing retreats and things to get us together as a board. I think any time that you have a vacancy, and please know, this is no disrespect to Dr. Benson, I certainly worked with him, but Dr. Kizner and I actually talked about it in our discussion. When you become and you know you have another place to be, us in the military suffer from, or at least my husband used to call it, the short timer disease. So I think that in that vacancy, we may have lost the cohesiveness as a board. And I may be kind of saying some of what Ms. Decatur said, that I think we need to address that as a board. I am not going to suggest that it be done in the Governance Committee meeting. I actually, there are a lot of things I believe that committees are best for, some of it cutting through the stuff. But I do believe it's an issue that we need to, as a board, examine. And I think that that's fair to, for us to, to do. So I'm not sure, like, right now, the emotion is to discuss board member conduct. I think we should discuss the board member conduct, you know, in general. I'm not sure it needs to be tonight, but I believe that, that discussing it, but not, to me, it doesn't solve anything tonight. I don't know if that's helpful or not, but. But I, would you repeat that?
Yes, actually, the motion on the table at this point is to pass the gavel when the school board discusses.
I'm sorry, then I must.
Development-related. Development-related.
Okay, I apologize, and I did not hear, I did not read.
No, it was seconded. It's been seconded. And it was actually on the agenda for action at the last meeting, but Ms. Egan asked to defer it so she could get her materials to all the board members prior to the, the discussion. And it was actually on the agenda in August as well. So it's, it's, it's been before the, the board for some time. Ms. Hazard, were you finished with your comments?
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, I'm rereading.
All right, well, Mr. McOscar?
Uh, does Ms. Young want to go?
Sure, Ms. Young will go. Why, where you want Ms. Young to go first?
Ladies first.
Ladies first, okay, great. I was listening to Member Hazard talk about code of conduct. I believe that when I first came on board, I remember seeing the, the, the school board in action, and, you know, I saw some things that I didn't like. And one of the first meeting that I had, I, I brought it up. As a matter of fact, I went to Chairwoman Healan, and I said, hey, I would like to bring this up on the agenda. We, we put it on the agenda, remember? And you coached me to take it to the Governance Committee. And, and I did, but nothing happened with it. I brought it to the Governance Committee. So, so here we are today with a, a code of conduct passed the gavel. Well, my take on this is that we do need to adhere to the rules of the VSBA code of conduct, striving to always demonstrate appropriate behavior to a public and as school members. We all have different qualities that we bring to the board. You know, some of us have daycare, day-school experience, some of us has real estate experience, some of us have broker experience, law, government, technology, and education. I think that, you know, the code of conduct is how we behave and how we also treat each other. I asked Chairwoman Healan on one occasion, and I thought, when a subject came up, that a board member may have to recuse his or herself. And, you know, she said, you know, I, I, I see how you're thinking, and I appreciate you bringing that up. But she felt that that person, if that person felt that they needed to recuse themselves, she had so much faith and trust with that person, that they would recuse themselves on their own, you know, because of that conflict of interest. So I will ask the same of the chairwoman herself, if she believes that she is abiding by the rules. In addition, she had served 19 or 18 years, she said, and over six of those in chairmanship. So I believe we can trust that she cares about our students as a whole in our community to ensure our students are getting excellent education in Stafford County. So I trust that if something comes up, that she would do what's right. I, I trust her in that. I trust my school board members because we are a team, and we vote as a team. And we, when we walk out of here, whichever way we vote, we will say to constituents, somebody that asks us, yes, I didn't vote that way, but the board voted. And that's the end of it. We are not to talk behind each other's back, or at some cafe, or wherever, bad about each other. It doesn't look good. We need strength in numbers, especially when we go to the Board of Supervisors, to fight for something. We need to fight for each other, okay? I want to be able to fall behind like they do in those little, little, what they, the, the programs that they have in, at work, where you fall and they catch you. I want somebody to catch you. I know I'm a little heavy. But please, do, do catch me. I, I, I'll catch you all, okay? I got y'all's back. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Young. All right, Mr. McOscar, your turn.
Yeah, well, that's great. Hey, so, I thought this was, this issue was, was killed, but, so we wouldn't discuss it on, on the dais, but okay. So let's, let's play. So here we have, on several occasions, nasty Facebook comments about people on the board, about some board members, nasty emails about votes on the board that we've made, just pretty nasty stuff all the way around. And then I have the last superintendent, Dr. Benson, telling a, a board, a. Benson, telling a, a board, a, uh, or a supervisor member, or anything to make McOsker miserable, I'm good with, or something to that effect. And so it was, this, this culture of nastiness and connivory needs to stop. We come out of there, we vote, you know something? When Dwayne McOsker has a problem with somebody on the board, and I want to say it in public, I'm going to say it in public, just like I'm saying it right now. And when I leave the board, whether it's next year or ten years from now, if, if anything, they can say, I don't like him, but he's going to tell me the truth, and he's going to tell me how he feels. But you know what? Some things are better left to talk about between each other. You know, between each other, one-on-one. I've got a problem with this, and this is what it is. But, but, but this nonsense of, of attacking board members has to stop. And I just got an email about some of our board members today by an old supervisor that's going to probably have to come back into public session. Okay? Because it's something that's not very good. But I'm not going to say it here, and I'm not going to say it online. I'm going to talk about, with our council about it, and, and talk to our board about what we need to do about it. But this Facebook attacks and, and this, and these email attacks and these attacks in public have to stop. And I don't like what, um, I don't like the, the issue of, I've got two, uh, Facebook members that say, this board member's doing this, and then it comes into public session. I think that's disgusting. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. McOsker. And I have, I have a brief statement that I want to, um, to put in the record. I think those of you who have known me and seen me have never seen me with a written statement, but tonight, I want to make sure that, that I, I say what I want to say. But before I begin this statement, I, 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 I don't consider this personal. It certainly appears personal, and maybe it feel like it's a little personal, but I, I know. And I, I respect every member on this board. And I think everyone here cares about the schools and cares about the kids. That's why we spend the time that we spend here. So I, I just wanted to, to put this on. And, um, if you want to time me, Ms. Hall, I don't think it's going to take three minutes. At least, I hope not. The V S B A code of conduct provision under discussion states, "I will refrain from using the board position for personal or partisan gain and avoid any conflict of interest or the appearance of impropriety. During my tenure on the school board, I have never used my position for personal or partisan gain. With respect to the reference in the code of conduct regarding avoiding the appearance of impropriety, I search for the definition of impropriety. The Merriam-Webster dictionary defines impropriety as an improper or indecorous act or remark, especially an unacceptable use of word or of language, and the quality or state of being improper. The Merriam-Webster dictionary defines improper as not in accordance with accepted rules or standards, especially of morality or honesty. My actions as a member of the school board have been consistently proper, and I have not seen or heard any substantive credible example of an alleged improper action on my part. As noted earlier this evening, with respect to any alleged conflict of interest or impropriety arising from my law firm's representation of plaintiffs in suits against Stafford County Board of Supervisors, I reiterate that none of the actions that my firm has filed, including those currently pending in the courts, have anything to do with school board policy, nor do any of the actions affect school capacity or proffers, or have any direct or indirect impact on Stafford County schools. I have served with twenty-five different school board members over the past nineteen years. Each member of this board, past and present, has brought his or her own unique skills and experience to the position. Over the years, I have often utilized my legal skills and experience for the benefit of the school board, such as with respect to contracts, policies, leases, and deeds, as Mr. Haran well knows. In closing, I ask that the board permit me to carry out fully the responsibilities of chairman, for which I was elected unanimously by this board at the organizational meeting in January of this year." So if there's no further discussion, I would call for the vote. Um, all those in favor of the motion to pass the gavel, uh, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose?
Nay.
No?
No.
Madam Clerk, will you pull the board?
Dr. Chase?
No.
Ms. Decatur?
Absent.
Uh, Ms. Egan?
Yes.
Ms. Hazard?
I am going to abstain on this vote for the, and I will state my reasons. I believe that we have something we need to, to discuss. I believe that this is something that needs to be discussed. I believe that I have the information to make that, because I highly respect Ms. Egan. But I believe, and somewhat based on some of the comments by Mr. McOsker, I think we need to meet and talk about this. I think it is not, to me, a vote exactly issue, it's a discussion issue, as it was said in there. And I believe that that is how we need to discuss, how to handle it tonight.
Ms. Healy?
No.
Mr. McOsker?
No.
And Ms. Young?
Nay.
Madam Chair, motion fails.
All right, that brings us to the information items. Ms. Hazard, did you still want your five-minute break?
Um, yeah, I need one.
All right, five minutes, and we have a, um, we have a Halloween basket of candy here, if anyone needs any, um, Ms. Young is sharing with all of us. Thank you. All right, five minutes.
Did you steal that from, um, Linda?
I think-
I mean-
five-minute break?
Yeah, I need one.
All right, five minutes, and we have a, um, we have a Halloween basket of candy here, if anyone needs any, um, Ms. Young is sharing with all of us. Thank you. All right, five minutes.
Did you steal that from, um, Linda?
I think-
I mean-
All right, that brings us to the information items. Ms. Hazard, did you still want your five-minute break?
Yeah, I need one.
All right, five minutes, and we have a, um, we have a Halloween basket of candy here, if anyone needs any, um, Ms. Young is sharing with all of us. Thank you. All right, five minutes.
I think it's candy.
Did you steal that from, um, Linda?
I think-
I mean-
All right, that brings us to the information items. Ms. Hazard, did you still want your five-minute break?
Yeah, I need one.
All right, five minutes, and we have a, um, we have a Halloween basket of candy here, if anyone needs any, um, Ms. Young is sharing with all of us. Thank you. All right, five minutes.
I think it's candy.
Did you steal that from, um, Linda?
I think-
I mean-
All right, that brings us to the information items. Ms. Hazard, did you still want your five-minute break?
Yeah, I need one.
All right, five minutes, and we have a, um, we have a Halloween basket of candy here, if anyone needs any, um, Ms. Young is sharing with all of us. Thank you. All right, five minutes.
I think it's candy.
Did you steal that from, um, Linda?
I think-
I mean-
All right, that brings us to the information items. Ms. Hazard, did you still want your five-minute break?
Yeah, I need one.
All right, five minutes, and we have a, um, we have a Halloween basket of candy here, if anyone needs any, um, Ms. Young is sharing with all of us. Thank you. All right, five minutes.
I think it's candy.
Did you steal that from, um, Linda?
I think-
I mean-
All right, that brings us to the information items. Ms. Hazard, did you still want your five-minute break?
Yeah, I need one.
All right, five minutes, and we have a, um, we have a Halloween basket of candy here, if anyone needs any, um, Ms. Young is sharing with all of us. Thank you. All right, five minutes.
I think it's candy.
All right, that brings us to the information items. Ms. Hazard, did you still want your five-minute break?
Yeah, I need one.
All right, five minutes, and we have a, um, we have a Halloween basket of candy here, if anyone needs any, um, Ms. Young is sharing with all of us. Thank you. All right, five minutes.
I think it's candy.
Did you steal that from, um, Linda?
I think-
I mean-
All right, that brings us to the information items. Ms. Hazard, did you still want your five-minute break?
Yeah, I need one.
All right, five minutes, and we have a, um, we have a Halloween basket of candy here, if anyone needs any, um, Ms. Young is sharing with all of us. Thank you. All right, five minutes.
I think it's candy.
Did you steal that from, um, Linda?
I think-
I mean-
All right, that brings us to the information items. Ms. Hazard, did you still want your five-minute break?
Yeah, I need one.
All right, five minutes, and we have a, um, we have a Halloween basket of candy here, if anyone needs any, um, Ms. Young is sharing with all of us. Thank you. All right, five minutes.
I think it's candy.
Did you steal that from, um, Linda?
I think-
I mean-
All right, that brings us to the information items. Ms. Hazard, did you still want your five-minute break?
Yeah, I need one.
All right, five minutes, and we have a, um, we have a Halloween basket of candy here, if anyone needs any, um, Ms. Young is sharing with all of us. Thank you. All right, five minutes.
I think it's candy.
Did you steal that from, um, Linda?
I think-
I mean-
All right, that brings us to the information items. Ms. Hazard, did you still want your five-minute break?
Yeah, I need one.
All right, five minutes, and we have a, um, we have a Halloween basket of candy here, if anyone needs any, um, Ms. Young is sharing with all of us. Thank you. All right, five minutes.
I think it's candy.
Did you steal that from, um, Linda?
I think-
I mean-
All right, that brings us to the information items. Ms. Hazard, did you still want your five-minute break?
Yeah, I need one.
All right, five minutes, and we have a, um, we have a Halloween basket of candy here, if anyone needs any, um, Ms. Young is sharing with all of us. Thank you. All right, five minutes.
I think it's candy.
Did you steal that from, um, Linda?
I think-
I mean-
All right, that brings us to the information items. Ms. Hazard, did you still want your five-minute break?
Yeah, I need one.
All right, five minutes, and we have a, um, we have a Halloween basket of candy here, if anyone needs any, um, Ms. Young is sharing with all of us. Thank you. All right, five minutes.
I think it's candy.
Did you steal that from, um, Linda?
I think-
I mean-
All right, that brings us to the information items. Ms. Hazard, did you still want your five-minute break?
Yeah, I need one.
All right, five minutes, and we have a, um, we have a Halloween basket of candy here, if anyone needs any, um, Ms. Young is sharing with all of us. Thank you. All right, five minutes.
I think it's candy.
Did you steal that from, um, Linda?
I think-
I mean-
All right, that brings us to the information items. Ms. Hazard, did you still want your five-minute break?
Yeah, I need one.
All right, five minutes, and we have a, um, we have a Halloween basket of candy here, if anyone needs any, um, Ms. Young is sharing with all of us. Thank you. All right, five minutes.
I think it's candy.
Did you steal that from, um, Linda?
I think-
I mean-
All right, that brings us to the information items. Ms. Hazard, did you still want your five-minute break?
Yeah, I need one.
All right, five minutes, and we have a, um, we have a Halloween basket of candy
in October, and I'm more than happy to ride on their coattails, but I would like to make sure that these priorities are part of their consideration to see if they'll fund it with their lobbyists. So it's a money-saving measure.
All right. So, any other discussion?
I would like for us to have our own legislator at some point in time in the future, but it's very, very important, you know, especially for cost of compete. I'm working on that right now. Holly, I'll talk to you about it later, but I had some emails back and forth from Governor Northam, and I'll share it as it becomes a little bit more that it's happening, I will share it with the board, but I'm working on that on the back end.
Okay, sounds great. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve the school board's FY20 legislative priorities as stated in Agenda Item 11.01, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Information Item 11.02, approve the school board's FY20 budget priorities. Dr. Chase?
I didn't make a lot of changes, but I incorporated the changes, I hope, from the discussion that we had. There may be one or two wording things that need to be fixed, but, and so, I don't know if anybody has more comments at this time, or wants to give me comments later that I can incorporate.
Well, this is some for information, but it will be on the agenda next time for action. So if anyone has any further requests for revisions or additions to this, send them to...
I was just going to say thank you for incorporating exceptional professionals. I really like that term. Thank you.
Dr. Kizner, did you have anything you wanted to comment on this one?
Although I will tell you, these budget outlines will be remarkably helpful as I develop my budget, and I see significant alignment in the direction I was heading anyway. So I made this choose to use this and not have my own complete and set of my...
And thank you for your support and your assistance in helping us.
And thank you, Dr. Chase, and the committee for putting this together. I think it's very well articulated.
Committee consists of Jamie Decatur and Pamela Young.
I thought I heard that earlier this evening.
It's getting late and I'm hungry, I'm sorry.
I said you and your committee. Your committee being Ms. Young and Ms. Decatur.
I'm just hungry.
All right, I'm sorry. And did you have something to add, Mr. McCosker?
No, he doesn't. Harry Farm doesn't.
Yes. Yes?
Have you guys recognized Mr. McCosker yet?
Yes, well, we're trying harden.
Okay. Hey, listen, a great document done by the group. Just for the record, my two priorities, as they are almost every year, it's going to be educational, professional pay, you know, teachers and staff, employee pay, and reduce class sizes. That's going to be my two priorities. And then, because all the goals on that document are awesome, but going into the, as I say every year, going into the budget season, we really should kind of examine and then say, hey, here are three priorities for this budget year. And because, as we all know, once money starts getting taken away or added, if we have priorities, it makes it a lot easier to not get sidetracked with other competing things that come in from left and from right. That's it. Other than that, great job.
Thank you, Mr. McCosker. This will come back to us for action at the next meeting. That brings us to 11.03, approve the fourth year of a five-year policy services agreement between the Stafford County School Board and the Virginia School Boards Association for Policy Services in the amount of $3,750 from budgeted FY19 operating funds. Any questions about this? This is no objection, we'll put this on the consent agenda for the next meeting. I don't think there's any urgency that it, you know, be approved right now. Information Item 11.04, approve the superintendent's proposed revisions to policy 1120, Board Superintendent Communications. And we've discussed this at the work session earlier this evening. Anything anyone would like to add? I know Dr. Kizner is going to be making some revisions to that.
He's going to be making some revisions, so we'll wait until it comes back.
Right, and I appreciate Mrs. Egan bringing up the school board advisory committees, because I think that it would be helpful to address that here as well, for the benefit of the committees, as well as the staff. And the example she used was the committee with 35 members, perhaps more. There's some more applying every day, that we want to certainly respect the communication policy, particularly with that being a board committee. So if you could, you know, add that in there, you know, and if anyone else thinks of anything between now and next week that you'd like Dr. Kizner to address, please, you know, contact him directly. All right, that brings us to 11.05, approve an energy audit agreement with Trane Energy Services to identify energy conservation and/or operational efficiency measures through the energy performance contracting process. Does anybody have any questions about this one? Dr. Chase?
And it's just a question for Mr. Haran. So, we're going to spend almost $200,000 on this. Are we going to save $200,000 or more dollars from what they do for us?
Absolutely. As you know, the $193,000 is a cost if we don't proceed, it's a cost as part of the process. It will be rolled into the overall savings, the guaranteed maximum savings, and what we project to save on an annual basis for a certain period of time. So, if we go, if the school board elects to go forward with the process, and we'll bring that back to you, probably, we're hoping in the December-January timeframe, after the audit's been done, and we have some guaranteed numbers, some hard numbers to present to you, that will articulate the guaranteed amount of savings per year that these efforts will undertake.
Mr. Haran?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Young?
Yes, Ms. Young.
Trane, is that what we're using? We're using Trane?
Well, we are recommending that, the selection committee selected Trane out of a number of firms that provided proposals. We went through a process where we have evaluation criteria. We selected Trane after we down-selected to three vendors, and those three vendors came in and provided oral presentations, and the selection committee selected Trane, and that's what we're recommending to you.
So you know what I'm getting ready to ask you. I know maybe there's no women firm?
Yes, ma'am.
Or a company in Stafford County?
Well, this particular company, Trane, is from the Richmond, Virginia area, but there were none that were based here in Stafford, just for your information. But they were all sprinkled out through the state of Virginia, and many of them were national firms, which most of them were national firms. But all of these firms came off of the state contract that was pre-approved by the state of Virginia, and so we provided that RFP was open to all of those members. I want to say there's 15 to 18 potential candidates, of which I think it's articulated in the agenda item, how many actually attended our pre-conference, and then how many submitted proposals. I don't want to tell you the wrong number, but we, I think there's probably double digits, the ones that provided proposals.
So when was the last time we had an audit done?
Energy audit, the last one was, I believe, done in the 2008, 2009 timeframe. Don't quote me, but essentially, we've had two EPCs since I've been here, and I believe the first one in the 2006, '07 time when we initiated that. That was the first EPC that Stafford County ventured into, and it was spearheaded actually by our CFO at the time.
I know we could write these off in our taxes. I don't know how the school system works, but is there, there's nowhere we could write these off, right?
We don't pay taxes.
I know, I know, that's what I'm saying. But we could write these off in our taxes. You don't have to call me out, but, yeah, I knew that, but I'm saying, isn't there a way how we could, you know, okay. But as long as the kids are not freezing, you know, in the wintertime, because we didn't turn on the heat early enough for our kids, I'm okay with this.
Very good. Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Young?
Ms. Young. She prefers her name rather than ma'am.
Yes, Ms. Young.
He's trying to make me feel old.
That's right, I'm the ma'am. I'm the old one. Older. All right, that brings us to the last information item, 11.06, approve the award of a professional services contract in the amount of $167,000 using VSPA funds to Ascent Engineering Group of Roanoke, Virginia, for designing construction administration services for the repair mechanical systems at Rock Hill Elementary School.
Do you have any questions?
Any questions? No, I have no questions. Does anyone have any questions?
Get her done.
Rock Hill.
All right, no questions. Our next meeting of the school board will be October 9th at 7:00 PM, and I would ask the board to think about setting aside about eight hours for us to sit down as a board, and perhaps use that as our time to reflect on what our goals are, our relationships, our communications. I think it could, I think it could help. And, well, this is, it's a possibility, we may not need that long, but, you know, we've tried different things in the past, and, you know, one point, because it was hard for people to take a whole day, we'd start meeting at, say, 4 o'clock on Friday afternoon, we'd have, you know, we'd meet, then we'd have a dinner, and, you know, meet till about 9:00, and then we'd come back on Saturday and spend about half a day Saturday, so we're not committing, you know, a full day, which is hard, because everyone has a lot going on.
Is it going to be outside of Stafford, pretend?
Well, I don't know, we can, you know, we can talk, I think we're, we probably can't afford to do, we do have a credit coming from that meal for tonight, though.
Well, we will have to ask our legal counsel, but the statute says that if you're, if there's three or more of you, it's a board meeting.
Yeah, well, that's fine.
And we have to have it in the open, at a place where a Stafford County citizen...
But that's fine.
But if we have it at a town that may not...
Well, I'm not suggesting it necessarily be out of town. We've had, we've had meetings, we've got, the hospital center has that nice, comfortable room. It just would give us an opportunity to be able to, you know, to talk in a more informal setting. Yes, it would be a formal meeting, but it would not be sitting up here with the microphones and everything.
Just the board won't be just sitting out, it's impossible.
Well, I think, I think that would be good, and you're also going to look for that two-hour chunk for the two items that we deferred. All right, so we'll see each other, actually, we'll see each other Monday. Is that, that's not on here for the, don't we have the...
It's on there.
The advisory committee, where is it?
Monday, right? At 6:00?
Monday at 6:00 PM, and this one.
Where is it on here? I'm looking at an...
If you look at your adjournment and next meeting.
Oh, okay, but it's announcement of upcoming meetings, but technically, we'll be back on Monday at 6:00 with our advisory committees. Okay. All right, thank you very much. We're now adjourned.
Do I like to, is different versus half?